As it's called to order and as a matter of personal privileges, I'm going to turn the floor over right now to Janet Waugh.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. As you know, yesterday was my family was here, but prior to me getting here, my daughter came over to my house and brought me this beautiful quilt and her and my son had this made for me. And I first saw only the sunflowers, but then when they, they said, well, look at the other side, Mom. And when I did, there it is. And please notice, vote for my grand. These were, these were T-shirts that were worn on, in parades whenever I was running for election. And you might notice I have all different colors. Normal candidates, and I've never been a normal candidate, buy a blue or a green or a red T-shirt. I, my family wanted multicolor. Everybody wanted to select their own. So that's what they did. They selected their own. And anyway, that just blew my mind, you know? So I, several of you asked to see it because I told you about it yesterday. So I thought you might be interested in. You may want to come over here and let the back see it if they, if they want to see it because I think it's just really neat. And you guys can see the other side also, see what I saw originally.
Oh, yeah, the back's just as good.
Is it the back? Because that's what I saw. And I thought that was beautiful. So my kids are really bad. They can make me cry, you know? So thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
For those of you in the audience who may not be aware, Janet Waugh is the longest-serving member of the State Board of Education. She is ending her 24th year and this will be her last meeting and we will miss her greatly. Please note that all board members are present. If you'll look at the agenda, yesterday we removed Act on Legislative Regulations, number six. We will not do that today, but we will add at that point, we are, we have a few things left on the legislative priorities. We'll substitute that and then we will go on from there. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? As Ben and Betty, all in favor? Thank you very much. And now we are very excited about the opportunity to hear about the Ni'utiaqay Promise Scholarship. And I am extremely happy to introduce to you my colleague, who is the superintendent at the Ni'utiaqay two, four, four sixty-one. We were neighbors and, and, but anyway, Juanita Erickson, Juanita, welcome. And please come forward and we're just very excited to hear about this and introduce everybody that needs to be introduced, please.
And as Juanita is making her way up. Yeah, I just, this, this is a culmination she's going to talk about with this great thing in Ni'utiaqay. But it helps propel what you want to see happen in schools. And so thank you for being here, Juanita.
Thank you, Dr. Watson and Mr. Porter and board members. Before we start, I would like to introduce and bring forward Mr. Ben Cutler. He is the individual that is responsible for the scholarship and also Mrs. Rebecca Pites. Rebecca serves as our promise administrator and she also has a very unique position that you will hear about in a few minutes, called our college coach. So with that, I'm going to kick it off first of all with Mr. Cutler.
Welcome very much. We appreciate you being here.
Opportunity to speak with you. Truth is, I'm in a very long line of Ni'utiaqay alumni that have been giving over many decades generously to students in Ni'utiaqay and to the community. You might wonder why that is. Here's a little town in southeast Kansas. But you talk to most of the people that grew up in Ni'utiaqay and you'll hear lots of very positive stories about their childhood and what they got out of living in a small rural town in Kansas. Most of us don't realize that until much later in life, when we're visiting with colleagues, maybe from a large urban city that didn't have the same opportunities that we got growing up in a small town. So anyhow, why the Ni'utiaqay Promise? I've been involved in a number of organizations primarily focused on giving back to people. And I view that as making investments, not giving away charity. I've been on the board of two NGOs, one Freedom From Hunger, another the Grameen Foundation. And we've been focused for many years on the very impoverished families living in India, Philippines, Southeast Asia, Africa, primarily focused on helping women feed their families and avoiding the next disaster that's going to befall them. But in about 2012, I discovered a promise program that was started in Kalamazoo, Michigan in 2005. I was intrigued by what they were doing and subsequently did a fair amount of research over the next couple of years. And over 200 other communities in the United States had established a promise program. My research pointed to three major impacts those programs had on their communities. First, obviously, they were providing financial resources to students to go on for post-secondary studies, many of whom probably would not have been able to go on to school lacking a promise scholarship program. The second impact was very interesting also, and that was the impact it had on the school system. Many of these communities had seen shrinking enrollments in their school. Many of those were reversed after a promise program was introduced. The rigor of the academics in the communities made, in some instances, dramatic improvements, enabling kids to have a much more successful post-secondary experience than they might have otherwise had. And finally, many of these communities became much more prosperous as a result of the promise programs. There's a number of longitudinal studies that have been over the years of promise programs in communities. I would urge you to take a look at those. They are, there are some very interesting results that you might find interesting. Two other things that excited me about establishing a promise program. First, it was an opportunity for, to acknowledge and thank my mom, who was a great mom. So the Marilyn Cram Cutler Charitable Foundation is the funding source for our, our program. The second equally interesting of the 200-plus communities around the country that had established promise programs, there were none in Kansas at the time I was working on this. And I thought, wouldn't it be nice to put Ni'utiaqay on that map? So that was another major reason. We're going, we're finishing our third year with the program and I'd say we've had mixed results. We've had some, we've had some wins, we've had some losses. We've certainly learned a ton about how to put a program like, like this together. As an example of that, we introduced this November 2019. As you'll remember, December, along comes COVID. So our first two years in this program were, let's just leave it at challenging. One of the bright spots, though, that we've been able to achieve is we brought in our program administrator Rebecca Pites in our second year and she has put a breath of fresh air in our program. I mean, the work she is doing, you'll hear a little bit about what she's doing. She is an amazing person. During the course of her tenure with us, she had twin boys on top of two pre-K girls. So in addition to trying to manage four little ones, she managed to keep our program on track as well. So we're very, very pleased to have her as our star. So let me turn it over to Juanita and talk a little bit more about our program and I'll be glad to answer questions later. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can we pull up the PowerPoint that I believe all of our board members have too? Yep. Yeah, there we go. We came all prepared. So she'll pass out paper copies to you. Thank you, Rebecca. Well, as, as she's doing that, I'm going to go ahead and talk. The purpose then, as we listened to Ben for our promise program in Ni'utiaqay, was to provide that financial support for a meaningful scholarship then for our high school graduates. We also wanted to provide other resources and supports though for our students. Many of our students are first-time college-going families. A lot of our parents work industry in Ni'utiaqay, so our parents don't know how to navigate that college world. We also wanted to have many of our students take those post-secondary advantages that we have out there that we can offer them, which many of them, we'd get them graduated, but we would not get them successfully completing those post-secondary credentials as they moved forward. We also wanted to enhance Ni'utiaqay as a community that was an attractive place to live and to work. And while we're in the very beginning stages of all of that happening, I can tell you that it has been very nice to see our enrollment continue to go up. Maybe not in huge chunks, but we do see enrollment coming to Ni'utiaqay. We also are not seeing the decline that other surrounding districts are happening. So what are our requirements? This, when Ben came in and sat down and started talking to me, that caused us to dig deep, deep into data. So on that second page of your PowerPoint, you've got the requirement reviews sitting right there in front, in front of you. So many of our students think, oh, free college. Well, it's not completely free. So what the, what the scholarship pays for are the mandatory fees and tuition. But kids also have to have some requirements that they meet. So they have to have at least a 2.5 cumulative GPA, at least a 20 on their ACT. And that's if they're going to a four-year university, because you don't need that ACT, you know, if you're going to the two-year or to a technical school. And then our students have to be in what we call good standing within the district. There was also a part that Mr. Cutler felt very, very strongly about, and that is teaching our kids to give back to our community, which I think is also very, very important. It's a part of the work for the, for the Kansas standards as well. And the class of 2023, the kids are required to have 40 community service hours. And just in the last three years of awarding the scholarship, we do award the medals at graduation for the 100 hours or more of the community service that our high school kids have. We continue to see that number increase, which has been very exciting to watch as we continue to move forward. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Pites now to give you some of the data that she's had.
So with the promise scholarship program came our college academic coach position as well. This position is a part-time position that is funded by the USD four six one school district. Our college academic coach works hand in hand with our college and career advisor and CTE coordinator to really create that college-going culture within our school district. We create a seamless transition between a student's secondary and post-secondary education using an intrusive academic advising model that we begin as early as seventh grade. We work together on hosting events. We do monthly senior workshops, as well as creating any college exploration opportunities we can for our students. The college academic coach starts working with our students second semester of their senior year and will stay with them until they graduate with whatever their post-secondary goals may be. We work together to identify any areas in which a student may be struggling, be that academically, finding a new job in their new community, whatever the case may be. So we identify those areas of struggle as well as identifying resources that are available on the student's campus. This being said, we talk a lot. So far this semester alone, I have made 1,200 contacts with our students. And again, that's just this semester. You'll see in the, with the data from the class of 2020, we're really starting to see a very interesting trend with our students. So starting with that class, we had 15 that attended four-year universities and 15 that were going to a community college or technical school that first year right out of high school. This trend is starting to, is split really right down the middle at that point. But we're starting to see this trend of more students going to a community college or technical school. And I think a large portion of that is due to the ACT requirement for the promise scholarship. It really allows us to have these conversations with our students and help them to advocate for their own education and create the best path for them. So with the class of 2020, you'll see that it's pretty much split right down the middle. By 2021, we're starting to see that shift happening with nine attending four-year universities and 12 attending community colleges or technical schools. And with this last year's graduating class, we had nine go directly to a four-year university and 19 that attended a community college or technical school. That being said, we obviously know where our students are going, but not only that, we know what areas they're struggling in. So this gives us a very real and unique opportunity to start implementing any changes we need to see with our students to help them to be more successful with their post-secondary education. For example, I had a student say that she's really struggling with note-taking. She was just not an effective note-taker. It was an issue she was having. So last week, Pittsburgh State University came to Ni'utiaqay High School, hosted a note-taking workshop with some of our students. So we're able to fix those things we're seeing before our students start their post-secondary education. In early September, we received the post-secondary success data from KSDE. And you'll see in 2017, only about 36% of our students were meeting the criteria to be considered successful in their post-secondary education. By 2020, you're going to see that that number has jumped, has about 69% of our students are starting to meet that criteria. So obviously, I feel like that this is an indication that we're making the unnecessary changes to help our students to be more successful. To conclude, I wanted to share a few numbers with you all. So far, since the program was announced in November of 2019, 92 students have received a Ni'utiaqay Promise Scholarship. They have attended 29 different institutions. Our students are really creating the best path for themselves. They're aware of the schools they can go, the programs that they have, and are just really advocating for themselves. 5,345 community service hours have been completed by these students. I feel like that is a wonderful indication of not only what the promise has done for our school district, but what are the promises doing for our community. We're really seeing our students be more active and more involved and it's just wonderful to see happening in Ni'utiaqay. And finally, over $368,000 have been set in scholarship funds since August of 2020. We are so blessed to have this program in our community and are so thankful for Mr. Cutler and his wonderful gift. And thank you all for taking the time to recognize him today. So we appreciate it.
Is the deferred area, is that students that maybe took a gap year and maybe come back later on?
So the students can defer for up to two years and that can be if they're going into the military, if they need a gap year. We do have a number of students that are attending community colleges that have just a lot of scholarships. So they may not need the promise yet and then they can use it up into their graduate degrees as well.
If you do not meet the ACT threshold and go to X community college and are successful, can you then continue toward a bachelor's degree?
Yes, absolutely. So you have one year at a community college and then you can transfer to a four-year university.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is extremely exciting. My, by the way, my, I only live 10 miles away and my children, I have small grandchildren. My, my family's always saying, if we ever move back, we're moving to Ni'utiaqay.
Well, send them our way. We would be happy to help.
Anything else? How, how? I, I think I know the answer to this. How long can this, is this, can this program be sustained? And if you don't want to answer that question, that's perfectly all right. But what I've heard is that it's going to be a long time and that there's a lot of, a lot of support here.
I, I did, I'm, I'm a numbers guy. So I spent several years putting the financial model together for this program, which as you well would imagine, has a lot of assumptions. How many kids are going to graduate? Where are they going to go to school? What are the tuition inflation rates going to be over the next 25, 30 years? But I told the, the community when I introduced the program, I've got sufficient resources put aside to run this program for at least the next 25 years, if not longer. So we're, we're, we're excited about the opportunity. Any other questions?
Yeah, Eric, encourage your friends to do the same. Melanie.
Well, I've had, I have had a couple, I have had a couple of calls from superintendents just wondering about the program and, you know, asking me a little bit more detail. And I'd, I'd be happy to talk to any superintendents or communities about this program. I know the help I got from other promise program administrators around the country, I mean, they'll bend over backwards to help. So I mean, it's a, it's a fabulous community of people. It really is. So I urge you, if you have anybody interested, give me a call. Thanks.
Melanie?
Thank you, Chairman Porter. I just want to say thank you. Thank you so much for putting this together and making this an option for students. One of the things, when we, Porter took the words out of my mouth about the 20 on the ACT, but I wanted to have a minute just to focus on the fact that you've created an opportunity that's not just a four-year college degree. These are kids that are going to have the opportunity to go into the workforce sooner because they've got that certificate or they've got that associate's degree and that's just such a big deal. And as you mentioned, you know, it's a great jumping off point then to go to a four-year college. So thank you for creating opportunity. This is exactly what these kids need.
Just, just to that point, a lot of the promise programs that I looked at in research did not provide certification scholarships for technical schools. And I think particularly in a small community in southeast Kansas, you know, we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need people to come back into the community. And so I felt very strongly that that was important. One of the issues I did have was, you know, how do I certify that this is an appropriate school for the kid to go to? And when I discovered that Pell has, has a program in each state of certifying universities that are eligible for Pell Grants, I figured, well, if Pell says it's okay, I mean, it seemed to me that was a very legitimate way to sort of screen certification programs. So we're, we, we're getting, I think, good traction right now on that in our school, seeing more kids move it. They're great paying jobs. I mean, some of these kids could be making six-figure incomes. So we're excited about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, thank you. These, I mean, the chart tells the story. So I wish it was up on the screen, but this is, this is amazing.
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious as to where these, these kids are going. Not necessarily by, by institution, but are they staying in state or all these kids staying in state or are they going all over the place?
All over the place.
Are they going to private, public, kind of everything? There's no restrictions on that?
Yes. We've had students go out of state, private institutions, public institutions, community colleges, technical schools, you name it. Which is also wonderful because now we're really be able, being able to create this network of, you know, what is it like to be a student there? So our students are really able to create that as well. It's been great.
Nina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How many students at this point have, or is there a commitment to return to Ni'utiaqay? Or in other words, are they, is this benefiting your community directly by students returning with the training that they've received?
So it is still a fairly new program, but we are starting to see a lot of students that are indicating they want to come back home. So that has been, I think that a lot of the students I speak with, that is their ultimate goal is to move back to southeast Kansas and build their life there. So I think that hopefully in the future, we will absolutely be seeing that. And we are seeing a number of our students be successful in whatever their, their goals have been so, so far with like technical schools. So hopefully we'll see that. Absolutely.
And the program just sounds wonderful and something that even a big, bigger community could make use of. So thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. So, I don't remember. I, I think maybe it was, Monita, we had the discussion. Ben and I certainly started email correspondence and then had a lot of phone call. And I don't know what's quite happened first. But that initial celebration that we had in Neodache and the response of the community and the response of those seniors in particular that, that year, and I know we had a lot of kids, was just remarkable. And, and the journey is, Ben, as you mentioned, is not always linear, right? You know, there's adjustments, and we've talked a few times over the phone about, about that. Share with the board a little bit more of the lessons learned. Not, I mean, not only from the scholarship itself, but what's going to take for communities to prepare kids to execute that post-secondary plan? And maybe just what you found that other districts could be, could find useful in that K-12 experience that has to probably be there to ensure that small rural communities or impoverished communities can, can make something work.
Sure, you absolutely may.
I, I, there, I think one great example.
Could you stand in front of the mic? We're live streaming, so.
One, one great example. We found that the kids, and again, we were in a COVID year. It was a unique experience, so I can't put 100% of the result on, on the kids. But we found that a lot of the kids didn't have good study habits. They were used to being able to be late on getting assignments turned in. They could take tests over again. I think we, we realized that our teachers, our high school teachers, were being too darn easy on these kids. And they'd wake up in school and all of a sudden, you know, get hit by a Mack truck with a different approach. So, I know that Juanita and the principal and the teacher sat down and scratched their heads and said, you know, yeah, we're, we're well-liked in the community. The kids love us. You know, we're good teachers. But are we doing the right thing for these kids? They're going to get up into even a community college and be struggling. So, we decided we're, we're going to have to start getting tough with these kids. If you don't miss, if you turn in a homework assignment late, you're not going to, it's not going to count. You can't take a test over. I mean, that's a, may sound like a small thing, but I mean, that to me was a, a great example of something that kind of came along that was an OG. You know, we, we've got to up our game a little bit. And I, and I know that one of Rebecca's big challenges, a, a lot of these kids, first generation in college. She's had to handwalk, I can't tell you how many of these kids, handwalk them through the process of filling out enrollment forms and, and filling out all the materials. I get a call, I get a call from her, I got to go to Wichita State today. This kid's having a struggle with his commitments here. Another small example is we require kids to take a FAFSA test, to, to do the FAFSA. And what we discovered is that the first year that we did that, the number of kids that were eligible for Pell grants was larger than the year before. Why? Many of the kids didn't even know that there was a Pell available. Families didn't want to fill out the paperwork. So, one of the other benefits that we got as a result of this was we got a lot more families that are eligible for a full Pell that are now receiving it. So, just a couple of little examples, and I'll ask Juanita, because I know she's got a half a dozen others.
Well, I can tell you specifically in the classrooms, it's really helped us lead into the conversations of rigor with our teaching, which needs to happen. It also has led to very individualized conversations about the individual plans of study. What is that right path for Johnny or Sally to take according to, you know, the grades that they have, their interest? What, how they want to, you know, where do they want to work when they're out of high school and done with their post-secondary? When we got our results back this year, when you look at 2017, that was my first year I went to Neodache. I hate that our post-secondary scores are two years delayed. We can't do anything about that. But when you could see the jump in those 2020 scores, which was the first year we had awarded the Promise Scholarship, that you should have seen everybody celebrate that. And by everybody, I mean, all the way from high school down to our pre-K teachers. Because this truly is not only a district endeavor, it's a community endeavor. And so, obviously, working with many of our community folks, our issue has been housing in southeast Kansas. And so, serving on the Economic Development Board, working with the city, if we don't have houses, we can't have places for people to come and move to. But, you know, when COVID hit and materials skyrocketed, nobody wanted to go out and work, well, then what are we going to do? How are we going to solve that problem? Well, we ended up building what we call a Phoenix Project within our own community. And our S and V students, our special needs vocational students, go out and instead of building homes, they are now repairing homes in Neodache that need that outside facial lift, maybe a roof, maybe a new porch put on. Maybe they're adding a garage to a home, those types of things to spruce up some of the properties in town. We've also worked with people to come in and do some landscaping or to clean up yards just to make our community more presentable. So, while COVID may have put parameters on us, what is it that we can do then outside of our own parameters? And those are just a couple of examples. This fall, when I had a nursing home called the District Office, and they said, hey, we've got a problem, and we're wondering if you can help us. And I said, well, let's see. And their issue was their residents wanted their windows washed in the nursing home, but their custodian that worked there didn't have enough time to get both inside and outside windows washed. And I said, we've got a perfect solution to that. Our kids need to have community service hours. We're going to help you organize this on a Saturday or during the school day if we can get some release time. And we've got kids out there helping wash windows in our nursing home and our, you know, older folks in the community. We're absolutely thrilled. So, it's built major community relationships like that as well. So, I could go on and on for hours, but I'll let Rebecca hit a few more of them, okay?
I feel like they've really kind of knocked it out of the park with that. But I think that one of the biggest things that Mr. Cutler was mentioning is that FAFSA, having our families complete that, fill that out, that was definitely a, has been a game changer. And so, now we host FAFSA Night. We have families come, just complete it right then and there and get that knocked out. And I think that really just starting to educate our families on how this post-secondary process works because of the large number of first-generation students we have. Also, this spring, I'm wanting to host a Parents on Campus. So, having parents come with our students, and we'll go on a few campus visits where we have a large number of students going just to, again, really encourage that. So, families know how to help their students. Because I do speak with our students a lot because it's really, the families don't know how to help all the time. And so, wherever we can, just to be that extra layer of support for our students, that's what we're here to do, see them be as successful as possible.
And Juanita, I'm so pleased that you didn't go on for hours.
I knew you had a late night last night.
We really appreciate that. At this time, we would like to give a certificate of recognition to you, Mr. Cutler. It will probably go with the 500 you already have. I'm sure it'll be in a, in a prominent place. And invite all three of you and the board members and the commissioner to meet here in front of the desk, and Ann will be taking the pictures for us. At this time, we're very excited about a district showcase, and we have with us the CHINI USD 268 presentation. And please come forward, and we look forward to hearing from you. Introduce yourself and your colleagues, please.
Well, good morning to everybody, and thank you. It's, it's always a privilege to get to, to be involved in anything, unless you're called here for the wrong thing. But I'm fortunate, my name is David Grover. I'm the superintendent at CHINI. I've been there 11 years, and this is my 37th year. And this is Mr. Rosenhagen, our high school principal. And Nicole Hendrickson is our College and Career Ready Director. So, they have some handouts for you, and I'm afraid they don't trust you to look at it until they've got to speak, or you'll be like the kids.
We understand that. And that's a wise decision.
I, I know, given, given the group. And really, I'll, I'll just take a few minutes because as, as we all know, the people in the trenches are the ones that are actually pulling off anything that is seen as successful, and that's certainly true in this case. I think what's brought us here, and if nothing else, you know, you, you write out everything, what are you going to say to the state board? And, and all that, and I kind of just left it back there in my bag, so I hope I don't stumble. Because in reality, you know, as a superintendent, you're always following what's happening here, and you do need to sometimes probably be reassured that, yes, we are. And when, when I watched yesterday's meetings and the, the task of assessments and ACT and MTSS, and we literally are all talking about the same thing. And then you go, wait a minute, we're going tomorrow to talk about a lot of things that have a little bit to do with that. And, and I think that's the, the real-life world we're in right now of both sides competing, and there are not wrong answers. But, but for our sake, on the college and career, what we did is we actually had a bond issue back in 2014. And we saw an opportunity of, I watched a couple, couple crazy people drive around all over on a bus. And, and a group produce a lot of different things, and one of which was post-secondary success. And as a parent of three people, who could argue against anything that's in there of what you want for your child? So, we decided, how can we potentially bring those two things together? So, we tried to create some spaces and places as we were attempting to integrate what this might look like. We knew this could not be successful because it was an edict from the state board or the superintendent across the parking lot. And even the challenge for a principal within their own building. So, the first thing we did is look around. Again, those are in the early stages of all this. And as our colleagues just, just talked about, man, I wish we had this information sooner and faster, and why is it lagged by two years and all that? Because the first thing we're, we are, we are given is, here's your numbers. And to be clear, we didn't even know what our numbers were based on or what our goals were. So, it was a great starting point, but it was also a little bit scary to be measured on something you didn't know you were being measured on. But it gave us a great launching point. We gathered a large, we, we took our biggest activity bus and go, okay, who's out there already nibbling on this and being successful? It's obvious today, even as I watched yesterday and your presenters, but Blue Valley Cabs and what they're doing. So, we literally loaded up board members, teachers, administrators, community members, bank presidents, you name it. We just had a great group of 40, 45 people left at 6:00 in the morning and went, we're on the west side of Wichita, and went to Blue Valley to Cabs, who were always gracious enough to let people come and view success. And obviously, that building is worth a little bit more than our district. And you walk away in awe. And then by the time you get back and you have lots of conversations and you see everything, reality hits you. And our conversation is always, if our student is sitting, because we're talking about post-secondary success, if our student is sitting interviewing and in the other chair is a Blue Valley Cabs graduate, our kid's in trouble for no fault of their own, but based on experience. So, we tried to take what is there and what's a, what's a large 3A school district in Kansas do to try to level the playing field for their own students? And that's really the, the launching point. And, and my main feeling, and I know that you agree with it, but sometimes you don't ever actually get to see it in practice, is the great ideas that we come up with, are they really doing them out there? Does it really work? That kind of thing. And, and that's what we did. And my, my other point would be that the perseverance and persistence that it takes, because the launch is in '14 and the strategies and the ability to, to put it all in line and in place, and what they start to show you, 2020, with, you know, we have no idea with COVID. What's, what, what did it do to this? Because you haven't given us that yet, because you don't know. What, what's the fallout of that? Because you're going to, you're probably going to hear some great stories about internships. And it's, it's not easy to sit 25 miles outside of Wichita and get two-thirds of your class some year into a, into an internship. You'll hear about, I know we are the only school in the state of Kansas to graduate from CHINI High School. It takes 36 credits. We, we launched to a five-by-five block schedule, which opened up, the, our whole goal was opportunity for kids. And this opened up a wide array of electives for everybody. And you, most of our kids will walk across the stage now with 40 credits. And we talk about, okay, what are some advantages we can create? In turn, so many of our colleagues, not to speak negatively, but are still on a seven-period day and, and trying to accomplish these things. And they're going to get some, many of them will get 20. and trying to accomplish these things and they're gonna get, many of them will get 24 credits. So the exposure that they have created for our students, I think is the main thing. And now you'll see the numbers and charts as well and what it's done for them. So I want to give the time to these two, but I do really appreciate your service and allowing us to speak.
Yeah, I'm Greg Rosenhagen again, the high school principal and I too appreciate this opportunity. And it's been a path for us, but it's been where we at now, we feel really good about. We know we still have work to do. If you want to advance the slide, I think two more. The post-secondary success measures, as you well know, are those four, I won't read those to you. But those certifications are again, have continued to be kind of the focus or the framework of which we work by. And just to jump right in and share some data with you on the next slide. That shows you where we are again with the graduation rate, our success rate and what our effective rate has been since 2014, since we've tracked that. You know, we're a 3A, we're a 3A high school with 250 students. So our graduation rate has always been good. We've had years prior to 14 where it's been perfect, but we haven't been there in the last, since 2014. But we feel good about the graduation rate. You know, 60 per class, one or two kids can really change the, change the look of that number. And as you know, the effective rate is found by multiplying that graduation rate by the success rate. And I'd like to focus on that last column of which is the one that we're extremely proud. 2014, we were at 51.6, which wasn't awful. But 2015, we showed steady growth. We had a small step back in 2017, but 2018, I remember when we both found out about it. I think we met in the middle of the parking lot because we were pretty excited. Surpassed 70% effective rate and then we jumped to 80.4 in 2019. I didn't do the research, but one of our staff members got really excited about it too and researched and found that that was the highest effective rate of any school in the state of Kansas, 80.4%. Took a little dip in 2020 at 73.6%, which still puts us in the top 10 statewide. And I know Nicole might touch on this here in a little bit. We think we know why that dropped a little bit and it was part of our own maybe errors in recording and all. But still, we're proud that we're, you know, hanging around that 70% range and feel like that we can, we can move in a positive direction from that. Next slide. You know, how did we begin this process of kind of getting the whole news and thought out on the post-secondary effectiveness? You know, even throughout COVID, we continue to meet with our site councils. The support of it from the superintendent and board has been terrific because Mr. Grover mentioned our class, our class structure changed to a five by five. I'll hit that in a little bit more detail, but they've always been one. I say he has always been one as well as the board to, you know, the coined phrase, think outside the box and look at ways where we can really get these kids to a point where they get into something they love and want to be a part of. So support from the board and the superintendent has been, you know, of utmost importance. Our advisory committees with our career tech add and all have been a big support in that as well and a big partner in us growing that effective rate. And just recognizing what our community needs. I don't know if any community probably would tell you that they have an overabundance of healthcare workers or something. And you know, we're one of those too. I mean, we do have, we are fortunate to have a doctor in town, a care home of which at times it's staffed more with high school kids than it is, you know, full-time employees and I'll touch on that more as well. But in the small print there, Mr. Grover, and this was a quote from a little, a while back. But one thing that the board to show their support did, when we surveyed our students and we surveyed our staff when we were still on the old four by four block where we had four classes one day, four different classes the other days and alternated that, we asked our kids first what we didn't offer that they wish we did offer. We surveyed our staff and said, what is it you would like to teach if you had the opportunity in a day where there was a block that, you know, it was your choice whether you're certified for it or not, let's put it on paper and see where we can go. And what the board did was say that if we, if we asked a staff member to teach something that they weren't completely certified to teach, that they would help that financial commitment in getting that done. So we've had a couple of people take advantage of that and that has been, been big as well. So again, a definite support in place from the Board of Education and Mr. Grover. The first action, next slide, the first action then we took and again, moving from the four by four block to the five by five block. I think walking away today, I'd probably say that that's, that's opened the door to do more things and has allowed our numbers to be, to be what they are. We're in our course catalog, we have, and I had my, a site council meeting just a week ago and I counted all the courses we had in our course catalog. And we don't offer them all every semester, but we have, again, a 3A school with 250 students and 26 teachers. We have 144 classes in our course catalog. And that doesn't count the independent study courses that we'll find for our kids. If they don't find something of their interest, we will find independent study classes of which Mrs. Hendrickson oversees and all. So the 144 is really a baseline number. We have the ability to offer a lot, a lot more, more than that. The five by five schedule, basically what it, when we surveyed the students, surveyed the staff, it was really a two-year process. I think we're in our seventh year now. The teachers were teaching three of the four blocks daily. Now they teach four out of five blocks daily. So we're gaining another teaching block every day for every staff member. So early on, Mr. Grover quoted an additional 26 classes. Every teacher took on another class. Whether that was a core area, you know, say math, we added statistics. In our career tech, we added guitar and music and just every teacher kind of had a, had a, had input in what we were gonna, gonna add in each of those. So our course offerings that we could logistically offer increased by 26 immediately. And then the catalog just grew from that because there are some classes we don't offer every year, every other year. And that just allows us to, to offer more and more. I'll touch on pathways and I'll turn it over to Nicole. Career tech ed pathways, again, 3A school, 250 students, we have 18 pathways. And we went from eight prior, with our previous schedule to 18 in no time at all. So that has exposed our kids to a whole lot. I'm starting to steal her thunder here, so again, I'll let Nicole speak.
Hi, I'm Nicole Hendrickson. I'm the college and career ready director at Cheney and I want to thank you for letting me as well speak to you. And I also want to thank Mr. Grover and Mr. Rosenhagen for inviting me because this is my second year at Cheney. So a lot of this took place before I came aboard, before they. So anyway, I don't think I would be remiss not to appreciate the people that came before me that had a big hand in part of this. I'm just happy to be speaking about that for them as well. So, next slide, please. So we, because of this scheduling change, as Mr. Rosenhagen mentioned, they had eight pathways, which then increased to 18 pathways. So that represents, so if these different pathways, that represents 13 of the career clusters. And for many of these pathways, there are student organizations and we have active memberships in these organizations. FFA, FCCLA, BPA, we also work with the ACTE, NCCER. All of those are great organizations that, for students and opportunities for them. Again, these pathways were picked based on what was good for Cheney, the community of Cheney and students at that time. That's not to say that that can't change. There may become a need that students express or workforce needs express that we need to address. And a good example of that would be an IT pathway. That's something that we've been discussing. We know there's workforce shortage in cybersecurity, in computer programming. And so that would be something that we would plan to address and that might be in addition to pathways. So even though this is the ones that we currently have, that is flexible so that we can help students in our industries with those needs. If you go ahead and go to the next slide, these are some of the certifications that we currently offer. NCCER, which is the Core in Construction Labor. Certified Medical Aid, OSHA 10, Home Health Aid, AutoCAD. The Early Child Care, ServeSafe, which is food handlers and food manager. Pharmacy Tech and some that we plan to be adding is the Master Teacher, the ParaPro, the Welding Sense Certificate and a Commercial Driver's License. But again, this just has to make sense for what your teachers can offer and just what makes sense for your community. Next slide, so a lot of these certifications, oh, there you go. We work a lot with the different colleges and universities to make those certifications happen. Pratt, WSU Tech, Newman, Hutch, Butler, those are all junior colleges that we have worked with. And we make sure that the schedule is written to use a student-first approach. So if they have a need, we make sure that, you know, that we keep every student's need in mind as we're writing the schedule and making these accommodations for that to fit. Okay, one more slide. Okay, so this is how the certificates have been earned by year. And you can see, you know, how many total that we've added. If it says NA, those were not offered at that time. And I think what we alluded to was that kind of our dip from last year. If you'll see that, NCCER went to zero and we had entered the stuff into a wrong testing platform. So it wasn't, we didn't get a chance to upload those. And so there would have been quite a few there that probably would have, they did earn the certificate, but not in the right, in the right spot, I guess, so to speak. So I've started 22, 23 and just kind of put some numbers down. Where we're, this is current as of maybe a week ago.
But you've got a half year to go.
I'm sorry?
You've got a half year to go. So those numbers will go up.
Yes, yes, yes. Some of them haven't tested yet. So a lot of those testing, especially, I know next semester, there'll be quite a few CNA students and CMA students. A lot of our shop classes test in the spring and not the fall.
Fresh off a visit with a student yesterday who wanted out of her final exam so she could take her CNA certification test next Wednesday, of which I granted hers. So we're not gonna hold her back from that. Next, next slide, just the, obviously, everybody has benefited this, benefited from this work-based learning. There we list the student benefits of which I think are obvious. It just increases relevance. If it's something they're, they're interested in, you know, there's a real benefit to them on gaining that experience. It's increased motivation with a lot of students, confidence, acquired new skills regarding school benefits. Just the community involvement and the connection with our committee of which has always been good, I feel like at Cheney. I'm from there originally, but it's just enhanced that. It's decreased absenteeism. Teachers stay current on changing industry needs. Relevance is a, is a big thing we talk about with our students and staff on continuing to provide things that are relevant or change with what the needs are. We're willing to do that. The community benefits, you know, Mr. Grover mentioned, we're about 25 to 30 miles outside of Wichita. So it's a little bit of a drive for some, maybe more than they want to, especially when gas was $4. But just being able to provide some workforce for our local businesses in our, our community. A lot of positions have been difficult to fill, you know. I mentioned, and I think I'll, I'll share the story really quick. When, when we were hot and heavy with COVID, the, our nursing home sits right across the street from the high school. And I had some explaining to do with a staff member because in, at a time where a number of the staff at the care home were, were out with COVID, we had students who were close contacts that couldn't be in our building for school. And they were home because of being close contacts. Well, they were essential workers for our care home because they didn't have the staffing that they needed and our kids were over. Yes, they were getting paid for working across the street, but they couldn't be sitting in a classroom back during the level of COVID. But I tell you, we really answered a need from the nursing home at that time. So one of the other benefits, I think we've got another real success story and we're gonna show you video here after bit, but we've got a student who's a second year at Friends University in Wichita. But he works at a Kirkham Michael, which is downtown. And that has led to a full-time employment for him when he's not playing football and taking college classes and all. But that all started as a work-based learning experience. And our partnership with this particular company, I was at a Chamber of Commerce meeting yesterday and one of the work, lead workers there, we're building green, we're preparing to build a greenhouse for FFA. You know, what can we do? You know, what, what labor can we provide? What can we do to help make that happen and all? So it's just really enhanced that, that relationship with those, those businesses. Next slide and I'll kind of fly through this one. These are just some things that we've done the last several years. Again, to provide students the experiences, everything from, you know, guest speakers. The numbers along the bottom just tell you how many of our students benefit from those. I would add the third one down, the career fair, that kind of took a hiatus during, during COVID. But we are beginning the planning of a February career fair where we'll bring multiple, it'll be a full day event. We'll bring multiple businesses in and have all 250 of our students benefit from that. Next slide. I think our teachers and I would, I have to say how much I appreciate them being supportive and not 100% when we move from the four by four to five by five. It's more work from them when you're teaching the class. But they were part of the process and they saw the need that our students had for more elective opportunities, more exposure to careers and whatnot. So they were part of the decision. Yes, we have a handful of new teachers that maybe weren't part of the decision. We've had to kind of convince them why we, why we did what we did. But again, seven years in, we really know, know it no different now. So one thing that we've, we've, and we've done this actually longer than we've gone to the five by five is the way we provide the support for teachers in some, some areas that they, not content areas that they haven't taught, but some classes and whatnot. We've individualized some of our professional development days. They write up a plan, here's what I feel like I would benefit from. And if that's visiting a neighboring district or, you know, taking part in a small group discussion, department level meetings or whatever, we've, not, not all of them. What we've individualized a professional development day in the first semester and the second semester. And that's been really popular and we've done that for, and we've had a lot of districts inquire about that opportunity for, for their staff as well. These are just three of our teachers who have commented about that. Mrs. Perez there at the bottom was going to come with us today and she's got six kids at home and then realized that we start our final exams on Friday and her classes, today's the last day she can meet with her classes. And because of some illness and whatnot, she felt like she needed to be there for the classes, for her kids the day before. And I definitely understood that. But she's our Spanish teacher, but she also teaches, we, one of our, I think, very interesting pathways is our Intro to Teaching Pathway. And she is a phenomenal teacher and does a terrific job in, in those kids who are aspiring to be, to be teachers, of which we place in our own elementary school. And basically, they're getting a better teaching, student teaching experience, I feel like, than what I got in college, you know? And some of them are doing it, they're doing it at the high school level and all. Nicole?
The next slide, please. So I had sent out to our teachers and asked them, how do you? So I had sent out to our teachers and asked them, how do you connect the content you teach into the community? And I got a really overwhelming response, so much that I couldn't list everything here. So I tried to paraphrase for things that they said. But as you can see there, just the, what they felt as the benefit to the community and school and students and then how they connect that content. So they're visible to the community and we do things like the Chili Cook-Off, for example, with our culinary students. And they get involved with that in the community. Through our manufacturing pathway, they use the machines. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of it, but they made the golf markers at the local golf course. They were, they had a need there and so they made that. They do some auto services and then they do their service-based projects, community work, the Veterans Day program. They help out at the senior center. And then there's just a lot of relevance for these students because, because of the work-based learning. Guest speakers, you know, if they're already taking a class that they're interested in and they actually have someone come in and speak to their class about different opportunities that would be available to them in that career field or that career cluster. So there's some really good benefits between, for the students and the community that way. And then we also feel that the industry-recognized certificates is really helping the students be successful as well. They can earn a high-demand, high-wage jobs oftentimes because of those certifications. So if we could advance to the next slide. So I also asked the students, how has gaining a certificate benefited you? How do you see it helping you after you graduate? And most of these that have answered this have graduated. And so I won't read these to you. But they see the benefit at a young age that they understand that they have earned something, that they've worked hard and it's meaningful, not only to them, but to their community and to the industry that they want to be a part of. So there's just, it's a couple of major points I'd like to point out from, from these benefits. So they can use these certificates to get better, better-paying jobs while attending university, if that's what they choose to do. In some cases, the certificate will allow them to enter the workforce right away after graduation and earn a living wage. It prepares students for leadership roles and it's also a really good resume builder as well.
The, I see the, the last statement on the current slide there, actually is from my daughter, who was a graduate last year. And she has benefited, I've got two daughters, both that receive their CNAs. One is a sophomore and one is a junior. I kind of chuckle as she comes home from college this weekend. She'll have been at the Big 12 Championship Game two weeks ago and she'll be in full PPE gear on Sat, this Saturday, working at the nursing home. So again, filling a definite need that our, our nursing home currently has. Next slide, our community partners. I'd just like to really credit our chamber, we have a very active Chamber of Commerce, again, for a small town. We had our monthly meeting yesterday. Mr. Grover and I are active with the Chamber of Commerce, serve on several committees, meet with them monthly for a luncheon. Our chamber invites four of our high school students every, we, we decide on who they are. They call it Student Spotlight. They're provided lunch, they sit on the, on the business meeting for the chamber. We'll have anywhere from 15 to 35 chamber members and usually 30 plus. And again, for a small town, that's, that's quite a few. It may not sound like a, a lot to some of you, but we have a great situation with their, them. We had a big Come Home for Christmas activity a couple of weeks ago and our FFA provided, they donated all of the food. It ends in a big bingo night with about 300 people. And our, all the food was donated by our FFA group and their work became community service. And all the money raised from that was turned over to the Cheney Emergency Fund. So win, win, win for all entities in, in that case. Next slide. This is one of the success stories. I'm, I'm hopeful that it'll be able to, to play here. I'll kind of set the tone here and whoever's managing that. Hopefully, there's a video available there. Trey Patterson, the student that is in this video, graduated several years ago. Lived actually in my cul-de-sac, his mother is our middle school counselor. Trey had an interest in the construction area. His dad worked for Hutchinson Community College in that area. Trey did an internship with several different construction companies. Trey was fortunate to receive a track scholarship at University of Nebraska. And I'll jump a few steps here, ended up basically tearing up his shoulder and having to quit the athletic end of that. But has had some unbelievable internship experiences. In high school, he was leaving at 6:30 in the morning because he loved the job so much in Wichita. We worked it out with his schedule, he was leaving at 6:30 and he was in from the time all the workers reported. Two of his five blocks were internship, where he got credit for that. When he, he took it upon himself, when he went to the University of Nebraska, they were doing some, some work on campus. And he called the number, ended up getting a paid internship with the, with the company that was doing work on, on campus. And when he comes back in the summer, he works for the construction companies in Wichita that he did the internships in high school. He was sent to Oklahoma City and oversaw some concrete work being done. They were putting him up in his own hotel room and things like that, basically just to oversee the project. So is that playable? Okay, I won't tell anymore and I'll let him tell the story. Trey Patterson.
This feels like my own board meeting where you're going, come on, come on. A couple of things really strike me though, listening to them while we're, while we're trying for that, is many, many examples. Just a few, I'm thinking of my next-door neighbor, average at best academically, great kid, knew what he wanted to do. Went to lineman school because he had been exposed to it with us. And is basically the same age of a certain person's third son who were trying to push through the finish line at college, college and career-ready. He's, he's now in his fourth year, no student debt and making $85,000 a year running a lineman. So there's, there's one example after another. But the biggest thing that that, that reminds me, and there's so many people in the room have spoken on this, the confusion. A great example is, is funding special education. Everything that they've just talked about is not free. And everything has taken resources from the general fund to make that happen. So all of this ties together and I know you know that, but it's a real-life example.
I think you're good to go ahead and play the video.
Hello, my name is Trey Patterson. I'm a 2019 graduate from Cheney High School and currently a student athlete here at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. I'm currently majoring in Construction Management. Today, I'm gonna be sharing with you guys a little bit about the Cheney High School internship program and what it meant to me. Going into my senior year, I was still unsure about my future career plans, but I knew I wanted to do something in the construction industry. I was given the opportunity to intern with Key Construction during the fall of my senior year, which led to a paid position that spring. This was then followed by full-time employment that summer. As an intern, I spent time observing and assisting the different positions of the construction team. This helped me more than anything because I was able to see all the different types of construction jobs in this construction company. From doing that, I determined that I wanted to be a construction superintendent. Having this much experience and knowledge so early in my career has led me to even more internship opportunities with huge companies. I'm currently employed with Hausman Construction, which is the biggest construction company in Lincoln, Nebraska. Having this experience coming into college has already put me in the leadership roles on the job site. I'm currently working on a $16 million neurosurgery center and I'm already in charge of all the framing layout and all the site maintenance as a 21-year-old. More than anything, this internship has been a resume booster for me since most first and second-year college students have no hands-on or real-world experience. If it wasn't for this internship opportunity, I could honestly say that I would not be where I am today.
We're gonna wrap it up here pretty quick. The next slide, I think, just, just as another form of, just to, again, share some, some data as well. Sure you've seen this before with, with maybe other districts, but that just shows our, our, our growth and our five-year effectiveness and all. Again, something we're very proud of, but plan on continuing to give attention to that. Nicole, touch on just a couple of kind of our next steps and then we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, go ahead and go to the next slide. So, and as I mentioned earlier, the pathways that we offer have worked well, but we are flexible to changing needs of students, the community, the industry. And so some of the discussions that we've had about how do we move forward from here? How do we grow from here? I mentioned the IT pathway. You know, we want to increase our student engagement, maybe starting a health science, in the health sciences by starting the HOSA, the Future Health Professions Chapter. Working with our current teachers, ask them again, what interests do you have? What would you like to teach if given the opportunity and how can we make that happen? Again, we gotta stay aware of our workforce needs and industry changes by seeking input from our CTE advisory committees. We've, we have quite a active CTE advisory group and. So we seek their input a lot because they really know what's going on in industry. And then also, just speaking with students, using their IPS data that we're, that we're gathering and look for common interests and needs. Are we missing some students somewhere? So just making an IPS at, at our level, a useful tool to help students succeed.
Melanie?
I can wait until, are you guys wrapped up?
Yeah, we're, we're open for questions.
Fair enough.
Just give those to Barbara and she'll get them to it.
All the accolades, this is fantastic. Several of us served on the Graduation Requirements Task Force. And we just went through a year-plus-long process in looking at graduation and what does it look like to be a successful graduate? So I just want to ask one quick question. You said you surveyed teachers and students to see what they wanted to add in terms of classes or areas of interest. Did you learn anything there that surprised you or were the results of those conversations pretty much expected? I see here that, you know, you've got to focus on health science. Was that what came out of those conversations? Were there?
Culinary was, was a big one that resulted. And then that was part of, and David mentioned earlier about when we passed our last bond issue. Culinary came out loud and proud on that. And we had a large number of students who, that's leveled out a little bit. But we've also tweaked our culinary area, the same teacher, we've added this travel and tourism class that was listed there. We had a group of students go to Washington, do an east coast trip last summer and all. So I don't know if anything, Nicole wasn't here when we made that transition, so she couldn't, couldn't answer to that. There are a few things that didn't, that maybe we thought there was interest and, and there weren't. Or when it came down to selecting classes that, that, you know, didn't, didn't take or, or didn't fly. But, you know, that, I, I was, I was maybe hopeful and I was just asked back here about the, she went, one of, one of the individuals behind me here asked about, they would like to know more about the Intro to Teaching Pathway. I was really hopeful, maybe selfishly, because I'm an educator and getting more people into, into that. We have some, we would like more. And we have the right person in, in place to do that and all. So I don't know if there were any big-time surprises, but yeah.
That's fair. I, I asked because one of the ones that came back from the students was they wanted Adult Team 101-type classes. They wanted to learn a little more about life. And at the same time, heard from a lot of students that they wanted agriculture classes to be required. That was their way of saying, we want more of this. Thanks for sharing.
We did do a lot of that and you, you raised a good point. Number one, that one of the first things we did was, because we were able to expand to so many courses, is we made CTE a requirement on your graduation. So everybody had to kind of pick their own. And I would say, you always have to be open to the ability of your great ideas are not always right. Or you have to take a step back and, and look sometimes. And Mr. Rosenhagen mentioned the, the wild success of culinary. And when we were building some stuff, I'm going, my gosh, why didn't we build this big gourmet kitchen or whatever? And then within about eight months, I'm sitting in Hutchinson and a wise person, not to be named, but stood in front of us and, and asked that very question. And man, what schools are interested in culinary? And boy, you should have seen our hands shoot up. And then you get punched in the face a little bit of the data and the reality of students making a career in culinary. And we started doing some rearranging that of what is fun and popular and, and all of that isn't always, it sounds great and it looks great on paper, but it's not always just the right answer for every one of us in the room to send our children to culinary school for the five people that might get that really nice culinary job. So we, we've done a lot of adjusting on the fly. To their credit, I think we've put 80 to 100 kids through our Teaching as a Career course. And we're looking at the Grow, Grow Your Own and all that. Another thing that we've kind of found, we've had some successful kids. But at 22 and 23, and I don't blame them, they're not necessarily ready to come back and teach in their small hometown because they already knew everybody and they're, they're having a career, but we're growing the field. Which I think is important if all of us can do that, we all know how important that is. So it's a really good question.
Okay, we have two questions and then we're gonna have to move on after that because we're significantly over time.
Thank you. Congratulations, I mean, really great work. I work on the Advisory Committee on Career and Tech Ed with our business partners across the state, developing those career paths. And it's really helpful to know that they're being put to, to use, particularly in small communities. Cause you know, these, these are gonna help kids find great-paying jobs. But you should know, we approved yesterday for the commissioner to enter into a bunch of contracts for IT training and computer science training for teachers, which will be free. So if you've got some teachers who really want to get into coding and some of those classes, they can probably do it at no cost to the district next semester, so it'd be really cool. Thank you for all your work, it's really good.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation and congratulations on what you're doing for your community, your students. You're making a difference. Cheney is an exact, great, exact model for IPS, for, you know, get building capacity within the local board, administration, teachers, parents and students and community. Cause you couldn't do this unless everybody was on the same page. And that doesn't happen because you just say it does. I want to congratulate you as leadership for making that happen. Somebody's the catalyst that makes that work. So thank you for your leadership, but thank you to the teachers. Cause you asked them to change and they did. You know, and it wasn't just a cosmetic change, it was a fundamental change to the way you're delivering services to the students. But also the parents and the students had to trust you in terms of providing those opportunities in a whole different way than we envisioned school. And, you know, as mentioned about graduation, you've changed graduation. It's kind of scary when you tell them how many credits they gotta have, but the things you're doing provide that, you know? So yes, you're, you're, you're way out on the front line and I would encourage schools to come and bother you and find out what you're doing, how you did it and why it's succeeding. So again, congratulations and thank you for taking the very things that we have talked about at this board, putting them in place and making it work for the success of students. Thank you very much.
And we appreciate you being here. I, it brings back memories, about 25 or 30 years ago in another state, I'd, we, we implemented the five-by-five block from a seven-period day. And actually, people were excited because every teacher got to teach and elected that they didn't get to teach before. And it was pretty exciting about that. We appreciate your presentation, I appreciate what you're doing, appreciate the difference you're making for the kids in Cheney. Thank you, Cheney, thank you very much. Thank you, Cheney. Thank you very much. Take as quick a break as we possibly can. As soon as we get a quorum, we're gonna come back, we're gonna go back into session and we'll go directly to item seven.
State-wide dual-credit agreement, and I believe our president is going to be Dr. David Archer. Welcome, sir.
Good to be back with you all again here. Um, I think we've had some really meaningful dialogue between Kansas State Department Education Board and our board, the Kansas Board of Regents. We've appreciated that. Um, you all probably remember the last couple of years, we've had one or two meetings where we've kinda come together and and talked about areas where there's cross-pollination, areas where we can work together. And in the spirit of that, we've identified, um, hopefully another area where we can um look at some options on working together. Um, and this area falls in the concurrent enrollment space. Um, which I'm sure everyone's aware of, is a program where um a high school student will take a college course. Um, typically, this um is during the junior and senior year. Um, most of this work is done at community colleges. They certainly have the lion's share of concurrent enrollment when you look across the state. Uh, fundamentally, there's a really pragmatic idea when you talk about concurrent enrollment, cause the idea is a student is going to get dual-credit. Uh, which obviously, if someone's taking a college course, they're gonna get college credit, but with dual-credit, they're getting college credit and high school credit for taking uh the same course. So essentially, you're knocking out two birds with one stone. And uh, I think there's a really good infrastructure on the K-Bore side that can help support and and perhaps enhance this work. Um, we have something called System-wide Transfer, where we have over one hundred courses that are standardized. They've been vetted by college faculty. Uh, they transfer across the system. Um, so things, classes, I'm sure that you all have probably taken when you were in college, like English Composition One, Intro to Psychology, uh, U S History since eighteen seventy-seven. Again, these are common general education courses that virtually all students take. Um, these have been standardized and they transfer across the system. So, if someone takes a English Composition class at a small rural community college, as one of our larger universities has to take that because the class has been standardized and essentially, it's the same. Um, so we'd like to to look at uh really kind of expanding that fundamental idea and applying it within the dual-credit kinda setting. So, essentially, it would, it would involve looking at like English Composition One credit. When you look at English Composition One credit, that would also satisfy a high school English graduation requirement. Or uh, a College U S History since eighteen seventy-seven course would also satisfy a high school history and government uh graduation requirement here. So, certainly, um, that that's going on in the state uh at a lot of districts. But we certainly have um heard about cases where that's not the case. As one example, uh, President Flanders, our CEO, um, I'd heard about a situation just recently where um one of the high schools said, if you do English Composition One at Washburn, then that satisfies an English high school graduation requirement. If you take the same class, English Composition One at K U, it's counted as an elective. Um, so those are kinda some of the inconsistencies that that we've heard about a little bit. Um, so what we're proposing to do is to to try to develop some sort of crosswalk system where if a student takes one of our common higher education classes, again, like an English Composition One, that it would equate, it would equate to a corresponding high school graduation requirement area. So, really just trying to explore ways where we can work together and have some consistency and continuity. Um, and maybe that's just through a recommendation. I certainly understand the local control context of uh which you operate. Um, but we wanted to um connect with you all and see what options we'd have to work together to to move something forward.
I should know the answer to this. What do you see as the barriers? Is that a fair question?
I I I think it, I think it varies. I mean, I think that some folks get an established practice and they've just kinda done it that way. I think that happens a lot. When I I did this work in Oklahoma, we had some smaller school districts that didn't have a lot of content experts and didn't have a lot of counselors. And then when we put out some recommendations and guidance on a crosswalk, then they were like, oh, I didn't realize that. I never thought about it like that. And then they ended up adopting it and and it helped a lot. So, I think that people have processes in place and they continually do them over and over. And and then when they get guidance, there are times where they'll revisit it and change.
Do you have specific recommendations for us?
Yes, so we've got um a list there in the agenda item of our most common courses. And that's where we would see opportunities there for a crosswalk and and uh for those classes to kinda be equated in terms of uh credit.
Okay, and so whose responsibility would it be to get this, to get this coordinated and get it to contribute, get it distributed?
Right, um.
I should know the answer to all this, but I don't, so I just.
Right, I I think it would be hopefully something we would do collaboratively, where there would be maybe a joint statement. Um, that's the way I would probably see it, but I'd certainly be open to thoughts you all have. I I don't necessarily have a uh comprehensive answer that's gonna touch everything. And I think that we would make efforts on our part to communicate to counselors and and networks and associations that we have to communicate the message as well.
Okay, thank you. Ann. We're gonna go with Randy and then Ann.
I think if you, if you wanna go down this path and you have the list there in front of you, that you could do a memorandum of understanding between yourselves and the Board of Regents. And then that could be distributed to all uh private and public schools that you accredit.
Ann?
Um, thank you. Okay, got a couple of questions. Now, dual-credit is where the high school teacher teaches it, right?
Well, not necessarily. Um, that, that's more of what we would call a concurrent enrollment partnership. A dual-credit is you're you're awarding high school credit and college credit for the college course.
But I know there's a different diff- difference between concurrent credit and dual-credit, right? But I wanna make sure we're talking about both, because I think we're gonna run into an issue in a couple of years. If the commission, the Higher Learning Commission actually follows through on making high school teachers have that master's degree, that we're gonna have a lot of schools not be able to offer these in the high school, cause the teachers aren't gonna go get those degrees. So, I just wanna make sure this is, it could either be a credit that they're earning at the college or at the high school. Would that be the intent?
Right, the intent would be just to make sure that they're not having to go back. If they're doing, for instance, like English Comp One and Two, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for them to have to take English Comp, uh, or not English Comp, I'm sorry, English Four, their senior class. It wouldn't make a lot of sense. So, really just trying to be efficient and put them in a position where they're taking that college course and essentially, it's meeting a high school graduation requirement and a college graduation.
Well, I get that. I mean, we were so close one year. We got fifteen hours through, what, we got it through the house
Right.
as a joint project. Um, so I also had a question on, um, at one time when we had our joint meeting, we talked about, um, you guys mentioned this would only be available initially to low-income students. But I know we would, I think we would all like every high school student to be able to access these twelve hours, no matter what their income was. So, are are we saying now that the proposal would be any high school student?
Right.
I'm sorry.
That's two different things.
Oh, okay.
This is just saying, if a student completes English Comp One
Oh, okay.
in either concurrent or dual-credit while they're in high school, the high school would then issue an English credit for that course.
A college credit, but doesn't somebody have to pay? I mean.
Yeah, that, yes, but that proposal.
That's a different issue.
Yeah, this isn't about who pays. This is just about the credit that takes place at the, at the post-secondary institution and the credit that takes place in the high school. We have, we have, uh, as Daniel mentioned, uh, at least some examples of a high school saying, I took English Comp One at a community college.
Mm-hmm.
We're giving you elective credit for that. We're not giving you English credit for that.
Yeah.
And then the student might have to repeat or, you know, have to take another English class.
Sure.
Not, not about who pays for it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a different conversation that we're very interested in, by the way.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Same here.
So, would it be then, first of all, are are we interested in pursuing this? I for one am. So, the, would the next step be to ask staff at the Board of Regents and the Department of Education to draft a proposed memorandum of understanding for both organizations to consider uh at some time in the near future?
I believe it would be. And then, you know, sometime in the January or 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 late winter months, then both entities could uh could take that up, discuss and vote on that.
Okay.
Sounds good. And and I'm not sure, uh, hoping we can maybe meet again in the spring and maybe that would be a good opportunity to have that conversation and kinda codify it, maybe.
Well, when, I would suggest that whenever we get that proposed, and we'll have time to look at it, we do that sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
Of course, I'm not patient, so. Anything else? Michelle?
Okay, just one quick, uh, questioning clarification, so I wanted to write this down. So, in order for a statewide dual-credit agreement to work, do all the teachers um of these classes have to use the same curriculum? Tests, assessments, et cetera? And then if not, then how do they ensure all those teachers, um, teaching these courses across all the schools are meeting the require, requirements to be universally accepted? If if that's the case, then it's, it's not really local. There's not unique things going on across the state, which is true education, in my opinion. So, I'm just, those are some questions that I have that are concerns of mine. Cause we do locally curriculum, we do our curriculum locally. And and um, and how we go about teaching those things in those classrooms are different across the state of Kansas. I'm just wondering if it's all gonna be, you kept talking about standardized, everything's standardized. Um, there's not a lot of uniqueness, there's not a lot of local, in my opinion, going on within those communities and within those districts.
Right, and so, on on the higher education side, general education is usually very similar and comparable. The more the specialization. The more the specialization occurs when you get into the majors and your accounting program's going to be a little different at one university versus the other. And so it is more standardized. I mean, there are common course outcomes. If you look at courses in our system, English Composition One and History, they're going to have common student learning outcomes to ensure that there's that consistency and quality across the state.
And Michelle, in this case, a student would be choosing to take a college course. And once that happens, then the school is just saying, in the dual credit, we would accept that as that local credit in the high school. But what happens in that college course would be dependent on the Board of Regents or that college or university determine the content.
Does that in turn affect, how does that affect our, like, our high school diplomas then? As far as how, the difference between a high school diploma and then going into college courses? If you're already ready for college courses, why would you just go on to college then? Instead of staying in the school through 12th grade, just go on and leave the school. You're done with maybe 21 or 24 credits and then just go on to college. If you're already ready for college courses, why wouldn't we just allow those juniors or seniors to just go on to college? Because it sounds like they're dual credit, they're obviously college-level courses.
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially what we're doing. We're having them get a head start. And I mean, the students who participate in concurrent enrollment really outperform their peers on about every metric in terms of going to college, finishing, completing a high GPA in the first semester or first year. So giving that head start is really pivotal. So it is about getting a head start. And even when you look at kind of mediocre students and you really compare apples to apples, the ones that participate in concurrent enrollment do significantly better than their counterparts.
I think what may be confusing a little bit is, and I think was for me, is I would guess well over 90%, if not greater toward 100% close, this doesn't affect at all. It's going on currently. So a student says, I'm pretty good in mathematics. I'm going to take college algebra now. I've taken through trigonometry, statistics, maybe at a local level, and chooses Allen County as my, you know, in my service area. That dual credit, that concurrent enrollment takes place. What at least has come, I think, to Dr. Flanders' attention is there may be in some instance where that's not occurring. Meaning that credit, that concurrent credit isn't going across. This would just say it should if there's any outliers in that. So I think many of you are looking at it going, this is a big change. This really is what's going on in the vast majority of school districts. This is just formalizing the agreement.
Make sure they get the credit where it belongs. So you don't have to take, so you don't have to take English twice. You don't have to take the same course twice.
Right, yep.
Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of every time we talk about these agreements, one of my concerns is that a lot of, several of my districts use a private institution for these credits. Sterling College in my own community, McPherson College next door. Is there, and I know their model of governance is a lot different than K-BOR. Yours is a little bit more centralized, which I understand that. But, you know, how much, I mean, with the private institutions, making sure that they're on board with this as well, so it is uniform statewide. I know it's a little bit different and we're not talking about the pay, but if these are very transferable courses, I know K-BOR and the private institutions, where the community colleges just had a big deal about a month ago in agreement. So I know it's possible, but it's involving, you know, that organization to this table and having a three-way announcement because I think that would be key for a lot of my communities as well.
And I think, Ben, if the independent colleges wanted to come forth with a similar agreement, we could do that. This is K-BOR approaching you, so it's not exclusive of the independent colleges.
Yep. Anyway, that is my personal feelings and my opinion, but I think it needs to be a three-way. But it doesn't matter because I'm going off the board a month, so.
Ann?
I just wanted to follow up with Dr. Archer's comment about the consistency and how important that is. I remember when we first created the Tech Ed Authority, the first thing we had to do was take all those core courses like construction and, you know, whatever we were going to have and make sure that all the community and tech colleges were teaching the same set of skills because we had complaints that I get a welder from this school and I get a welder from that school. And they, it's like night and day. So it's really important that these, when we say you've taken public speaking, we know what the student had and it's consistent throughout the state and not just based on what a local teacher knew. So appreciate that.
Dual and concurrent credit have been going over decades in a lot of places. This is just formalizing the process. So to make it easier for kids, to make sure that they get the credit where it belongs. That's the way I see it.
I agree.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ben and Dina?
Well, as Eric is setting that up, getting it back up there, we're almost to the end. This is our third round, two days. So thanks for hanging with us and jumping back and forth a lot. There he is. And where we left off yesterday was the concluding statement. We had a very lengthy conversation about including social-emotional learning in terms of including that on there. And again, where that came from, it's part of our five things. And so I think for continuity and sake and consistent messaging that we don't change that is my recommendation. You guys can do whatever. I'm only one vote.
I was not recommending changing it. I was recommending that we need to do, it's a whole different issue.
Oh, I agree.
We need to do a better job at explaining what we mean by social-emotional learning because it is being explained by people that do not support public education and see that as something that's evil. When in fact, what we're trying to do is provide a safe learning environment for every student. And so we need to do a better job of communicating what it actually means because it's being, it's being, well, I'm going to just say it. It's being identified by enemies of public education the wrong way.
But I was recapping the conversation yesterday, so this is the recap summary. But anyway.
So I'm good with it myself.
And I think next, during the next session, well, next year, we, we as a board need to look at at least defining what it's meant. Even if we choose to keep the term itself.
And what I said is not unique to Kansas. It's nationwide.
It is. Any other comments regarding the concluding statement? Michelle?
Okay, defining of individual plans of study, meaning, I mean, can that be like, as a parent deciding to go in and say, I'm going to say no to technology. We're going to do paper, pencil, and we're going to do textbooks because we have those textbooks every year sitting brand-new in all the classrooms.
That's a delivery of instruction.
But that's an individual, that's an individual plan of study. I choose to do it or I choose not to do it. I can opt out of it or opt into it as a parent. So my individualized plan for my child for instruction is to not use technology or an iPad or a MacBook. It would be to use textbooks, paper, and turn in via email if that's the way they have to do it. They can type up the paper and send it in.
It would match how we define, as the State Board defines, individual plan of study.
Which is defined basically by the parent.
Which is defined as the goal for the State Board of Education.
No, it's one of our accreditation standards.
But you can choose to opt out of the individual plan of study as a parent. Did you know that? You can do that. I can do that. I did that.
Okay, but individual plan of study means that by eighth grade, a student is supposed to have a plan of study for high school based on a career interest. That's our definition of individual plan of study.
Then that's, then I would say, then as a board member that's elected, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with individual plans of study in the way that the board has determined that. So I want to make that clear because I think that that's confusing because parents are like, what is that? You know, it's an IEP. They don't know. They haven't been explained what it is. And that's a communication gap between the school district and the parents and the board and the local boards. It gets out implemented, but people don't understand what that is. Because a lot of people are doing things on their own. If they have that ability in the family to do that, they're already doing that with their family and they're using the counselor or advisor at the school to help them implement that by advocating for their kid. If it's ACT workies or something like that, that may be something that they don't want to participate in. So I'm just letting you know that you talked about parent consent. That's another parental consent directing their child's education.
Well, and those are already in state law. So what we're talking about is that that is one of the things we've said is important for all students to have access to.
And it should be offered and we should offer that. And that's fine. And then they could opt out of it and then if you know that the ones that don't want to participate.
As a parent, such totally, you have that ability.
Yeah, so we've offered it, but it doesn't mean everybody.
We're not arguing with that. We're just saying that every child should have this, those things offered to them.
And the parent can be the one that does the individual plan of study for their child.
And if you don't want to participate?
Don't.
Then you don't.
So let's say 50% of the people decided not to do that at that school. Is that going to affect accreditation of the school? They've offered it and people didn't want to participate in it.
I mean, that would be a question to ask the ARC and you.
Yep, and it would affect their post-secondary effective rate. If people are leaving without plans.
That's, I think.
My most important thing is they're leaving with an education.
I think it's a different question than what this is.
Okay. I just want to put that out there. There's a communication gap out there.
I think maybe that's a discussion for another day and a different, different subject.
Are there any other comments?
Any other objections?
Are there any objections to including it? Nope, okay. Last item on here before you guys roll out the confetti. A board member recommendation was to add one FTE to the Department for Native American Education Consultant. Ann?
Yeah. The Council on Indigenous Education's been working on, as you know, one of their original recommendations was that there be a position. And they don't really care if it's in this department or in the governor's office. That would be a government-to-government position. And they have, they've written a job description for it. And there's a lot of things going on like work on Title VI, develop state parameters for tribal consultations. Most states who have as many tribes as we do have somebody in government who is that liaison, who does these kinds of things. They would chair, you know, we were talking about turning Casey into a permanent council, not just the working group that it is now. And this position, for example, would share that effort. However, everything isn't finalized yet. So I think the group consensus is that we won't formally request this this year and work on it with the parameters, try to decide with the governor. And there'll be a letter coming, Mr. Chair, to you and the governor expressing the need for this. And hopefully over the next year, we can develop a consensus and support for it in the legislature and tackle it in '24.
So you're suggesting to remove.
Yeah, we don't need to have it this year.
I can occur with that. I visited with Dr. Redcorn about also looking for other alternative ways to pay that and to support that at least temporarily. And so I think that we need to do a lot more work. I certainly support having, having, have better relationships and ways to do that, but I certainly think that we need to have a better plan before we ask for that.
Mr. Porter?
Yes, sir.
Does taking that recommendation out of this document here, taking it off? I don't, I.
It's just not, it's not.
It's not ready yet.
It's not ready.
Oh, yeah, sure. It should be determined. Put something else. I don't want to take it out of the document. I just want to say we're working on it or to be determined.
No, I mean, they're okay with us. Yeah, they're okay.
I'm just, with a new board coming on, it could be forgotten.
It won't. I'll remember.
And, Ann, is there not, I thought there was a kind of a coordinator.
Well, the governor has in her office.
I mean, their office is right here in the corner.
I think she's out on maternity leave, but the governor has a position for African-American, for Native American, and I believe for Latino. I forget the Hispanic affairs. She has three positions, but that is a full-time job already. So, but it could be in that office. And that's what we're going to kind of massage over the next years. Where's the best place for this coordinator to be? Because there are actually government-to-government, tribe-to-state issues in all kinds of agencies. And so we really need to flesh out how much, you know, help we need on the education side before we firm this thing up.
Okay, so that comes off.
Yep. Okay, with that, just to recap, changes only, Mr. Chair, if I may.
You may.
We removed the social-emotional issues. So the thing that I just highlighted, that is eliminated. And this bullet point is moved under health and safety issues. And we removed the Native American FTE position. And as I recall, I think that is the only change that we've made to the document. And we do have notes as to what was unanimous and which one was not. So we have kept track of that as well.
Tried.
Yeah. In terms of that. Oh, and we added the word grant to safe and secure, safe and secure schools grant. We have the word grants to that. I'm like, there were two changes. We had a grant, the word grant in that phrase.
And under item 10 from yesterday, there is a proposed motion. I'll make the motion. It is moved that the Kansas Legislature laid a position for the Kansas State Board of Education to be adopted as discussed for the 2023 session. Is there a second to that motion? Jim, make these seconds that discuss. Any further discussion?
Oh, if I may, Mr. Chair. I would be remiss to say, as I'm leaving, but Dina does a lot of great work in this field. Her knowledge of how the legislature works, not only being a legislator herself once, is invaluable. We got to spend a lot of hours across the street. We were there full-time for three months earlier this year. And it was very much needed for how much work was going on across the street. And she deserves a lot of credit for emboldening the voice of this board across the street. She really does. And I don't think she gets the credit often enough for her knowledge and her workability and how well she's seen across the street. So there's a lot of kudos to my partner and putting this together and updating it while we were at NASB in Phoenix. So I do want to appreciate that help. If I, as a personal indulgence, thank you, Mr. Chair.
We want to thank you both for your Herculean efforts in our behalf.
He's, he did a lot of.
We're very aware. At this time, I have given each board member the opportunity.
You want to take action, Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah, I guess we ought to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstain? Nine zero one? Thank you. At now, at this time, I've given each board member the opportunity to say anything they want to as they, I want to express the appreciation for all of them for what I consider to be outstanding work and an extending support of the schoolchildren of Kansas. Yesterday, Randy, when we were doing the reception, went in alphabetical order. I have the same plan, the different plan. I have the same plan, the different plan. We're going to go in reverse order of district numbers, but the end result is that Janet always gets to be last. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners and, and my fellow colleagues. I usually don't give prepared statements very much, as you guys know, it's very off the cuff. But, um, this is one of those I could do off the cuff. Because this is not a speech I envisioned giving seven months ago. I have been proud to represent the people of Kansas for the last four years and I'm proud of every vote I took. God grew me in ways I never thought possible. And, um, and now I am better prepared to lead than ever before. Every vote I took bettered the learning environment of my district. The car I purchased in May prior to my election now has a hundred fifty thousand miles more than when it left the lot. My life has been dedicated to the students, teachers, and parents of the seventh district. In the last four years, educators have something to be proud of. Higher graduation rates, meaning more Kansans getting that all-important diploma as they apply for jobs. Higher post-secondary success rates, meaning more kids earning industry credentials to take skilled jobs. More kids are completing associate's degrees. And more students are staying enrolled in a four-year college and thriving. We have seen the successful implementation of the mental health intervention program that brings mental health services to the families instead of the families having to seek services. For rural Kansas where mental health centers are over thirty minutes away from the child, this is huge. By serving kids in a school, we start to roll back the stigmatization of seeking mental health services by normalizing it as we do physical health services. We face many challenges ahead. The false narrative that Kansas GOP has made declaring that social-emotional learning is propagating critical race theory needs to be addressed head-on. Social-emotional learning has been taking place for generations. These are skills taught of how to power through a bad day, how to greet someone, how to resolve conflict, how to self-regulate, and how to ask for help. We can't teach a child everything academically in K-12. It is impossible. We want to create a graduate that seeks to continue learning throughout life. But to be successful, one must possess these soft skills. There are a myriad of other challenges like staffing shortages plaguing Kansas, inadequate special education funding, and post-pandemic challenges that will present itself over the next decade. However, there is a bigger problem we face as Kansans and as Americans. It is the rise of Christian nationalism. This narrative has now taken over the Republican Party in a way I've never thought possible ten years ago. This is a belief that we are God's chosen nation and we must follow the dictates of carefully selected portions of the Bible. This is dangerous on two fronts. One is spiritual. Christian nationalism removes the freedom to follow Christ by mandating the Levitical law by force. The liberty to choose is replaced by governmental coercion. This is dangerous replacing the grace of Jesus Christ with the yoke of the law. This movement also undermines our founding principles as a nation. Principles championed by Thomas Jefferson, George Washington, and Alexander Hamilton, and upheld by Abraham Lincoln, Woodrow Wilson, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, and Dwight D. Eisenhower. The First Amendment to the United States Constitution gives citizens the right to follow their own religious beliefs without interference from the government. It also prevents the government from establishing any religion. One cannot legislate morality. If we could, prohibition wouldn't have been repealed. A person's morality cannot be determined by one's party affiliation. Political parties were formed to control and organize government, not to serve as a morality monitor. My ancestors broke away from state-mandated religion by sailing on the Mayflower. My forefathers fought in the Revolutionary War and every war since then, including the War on Terror. I will forever stand for freedom. This impacts education to its core. Four years ago, true conservatism was electable. One that promoted limited government, but also knew that government can invest in itself a public good, such as the roads we drive on and the quality centers of education we have in Kansas. Conservatism that promotes equity for all people, regardless of race, gender, age, religion, or sexual orientation. Christian nationalism has militarized fundamentalists into destroying conservatism to achieve power and control. This movement, right now, seeks to ban LGBT individuals from teaching the next generation. My support for gay marriage came under attack this year for an office that doesn't even delve into the subject. All it took was my affirmation of LGBT instructors and students to paint me a liberal. These are the same fundamentalists that used the Democrat Party to block desegregation and end slavery. Sexual orientation like race and gender is not a choice. Our understanding of neuroscience, which the great God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob has bestowed upon us the last fifty years, has proven this. Gay students have a right to a safe and quality public education. Gay teachers should be allowed to teach in our classrooms. Students should have teachers and classroom material that reflect them after all. In conclusion, I have appreciated the friendships I've made across Kansas. I see in front of me lifelong friends that I will continue to call on for advice and a dinner or two. I know where there are thousands of people at home with whom I have developed positive relationships. They will still be cultivated. This is not a goodbye. This is the promise to continue to do all the good I can for all the people I can. Thank you, Kansas. You truly are heaven on earth. May God bless the great state of Kansas and the United States of America. Go in peace.
Thank you, Ben. Jean?
I just wanted to thank all of you, um, for all of the support that you give to education every day when you're working on the state board activities and you're working with the schools that you, um, you represent. I know, uh, in dealing with educators, especially in my district, these are dedicated, hard-working individuals who truly want to see their students succeed and to see our, our communities and our state be successful. And I, I believe that the way to do that is to, to educate the next generation who will take over for us and continue to improve life in Kansas. I also want to thank all of the hard-working people, the commissioner and all of the staff of the department. You all do amazing things every day. And we don't always see exactly how those things are done. But the amount of effort and work that you all do to make this all possible, I really appreciate. And, and know that, that all of us, I'm sure, uh, understand that and, and appreciate your efforts. And all of those organizations that also, also support education, um, in the state. Uh, there's so many of them. But educators are called to a, a real calling. It's a vocation and not just a, a job. I, I did want to say that I, I think there is a misimpression that our board is similar to, has the, the authority and the powers similar to maybe a legislative body, um, or even a local board where they can, uh, require certain things. We provide a structure and guidance to local districts to be able to maybe be a little better than they might be on their own. And I, I think based on, and those things were important to our ancestors based on having our foundation in the Constitution. And they continue to be important today. But I think that we need to make sure that, uh, our authority and our limitations in, in determining what goes on at the local level is, is, um, understood by the public. Local boards of education and local control is a foundational principle in our state. And that's something that we need to honor whether we agree with every decision at the local level or not. So I, I still advocate for local control and understand that in some cases that may mean that there are decisions that I wouldn't necessarily agree with. But I would like to also say that the work involved with, um, promoting our students will continue. So please continue to, um, and I know that you will, uh, work hard to improve student success. Students need to have a model of cooperative adults who are invested in their future. And I think that our board can represent that. We come from all different backgrounds and interests. But as long as we keep, uh, um, our vision focused on the success of each student, I know that we'll arrive at the right decisions to do that. So I think, um, I've really enjoyed meeting with you and, and representing District Five. It truly is God's country out there. And so I hope that you all will come and, and visit and, and, um, come to the communities that are, that are out in the western part of this, in the north-central part of the state. And thank you all for allowing me to have the honor of representing the district on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I guess first of all, I've got to comment on something Jean just said, that it's God's country out there. Well, you know, the first year I served on the board, Sonny Rendell was on the board. And he told me he lived in God's country, out there in western Kansas, because he was in that same district. But it was God's time zone also, you know, because he was in a different time zone. So I guess my thought is Kansas is God's country, so let's all remember that. I believe that Kansas totally is. But anyway, that's, I just want you all to know. I woke up at five o'clock this morning and I didn't have, I didn't know we were going to do this. I didn't know we were going to do it yesterday. So I thought, you know, I better write down something. So I tried to write down, make some notes at five o'clock this morning. So if I ramble, so be it. But I wanted to start off with thanking all of you. But I also want you to know that I believe, here's my belief, I believe it takes a village to raise a board member. And I've had a heck of a bo, heck of a village that has supported me. Yesterday, I forgot, and I felt really guilty about it, I forgot to thank my family. They were probably my strongest supporters, my biggest cheerleaders, the ones that pushed me the most and the ones that complained at me the most, to help me get on, to, to help me get elected and to continue to be elected. They are, they are amazing people. Uh, my daughter, uh, is a teacher, as many of you know, in Aletha. And I want you to know that she called me every time we had a board meeting, every single time on the way home and said, Mom, how much more have you put on my plate? So she was very representative of the teachers. And so therefore, I always remembered, we don't need to do that much more to the teachers. My son, on the other hand, he only taught for fourteen years. He's now a pilot. But he was very, very pushy about getting art education in the schools because he was a man director. And then, of course, needless to say, my grandkids are perfect, so what can, more can I say about my family? But I do love them and I thank them so much. And my friends, I had so many friends that, you know, I consider a lot of these friends as family because they are so dear to me, but they have been so supportive of me over the years. The most, uh, I started off in PTA. I need to thank the PTA because, uh, I started off when this young man, old man now, he's my son, started kindergarten. I became a room mother. That's how I began, you know, in schools. I'm not a teacher, I'm not an educator. As Danny knows, I'm a car dealer. I'm the son my father never had. Anyway, uh, I started off in PTA and ended up on the state PTA board. And I don't know, next thing you know, I'm elected to the Turner board. And when I was on then, I, so it just continued to move. And the Turner board, they were so supportive. I mean, PTA was supportive, they taught me so much. And then Turner, the Turner board was very supportive. And I can't thank them enough. I'm still friends with lots of the people I served with on Turner, in Turner. And, um, we had some amazing teachers and administrators. Carolyn Schmidt, who was president of the KNEA, taught in Turner. And her and I became very good friends. And, you know, we're still friends to this day, at least on Facebook. I hear from her occasionally. And then after that, uh, District One. Uh, it's a change this year, but I can't tell you enough wonderful things about District One. I was so proud. And they have obviously liked me because they continued electing me all these years. They were so very supportive. The, uh, superintendents I had are amazing, the district superintendents. I mean, not just in my district, but all over, but I knew mine really well. And they were just all amazing and they were also supportive. And, and we became friends. That's the most important part of this is because you do become friends with all these people. And then, uh, of course, after that, the teachers, oh, man. I could go on and on about teachers because teachers are truly my heroes, you know. They're, let's face it, they say that the most important person in a child's education is a teacher. You got it, that's the number one person. All these others, we need, we do need, they're amazing, all the administrators and the superintendents and, oh my goodness, I consider everybody an educator, that's a bus driver or custodian and all those. I, I think they're all amazing people and all the, I consider them educators and they're all my heroes, so. But especially the teachers. Uh, I can't, I also would like to mention the, uh, the organizations that have helped me along the way. The KNEA, the KASB USA, CASHA, and Kabor. You know, and that's one, one thing I wanted to mention today. When I was hearing from Kabor, you know, I've been here forever. I think when God created the state board, that when it started, something like that. Anyway, uh, when I got on the board, times have changed so much. When I got on the state board, we, uh, we had never met with the Board of Regents. So we talked about, we thought, well, we ought to really talk to them because that's where we're sending our kids. So we did. Well, needless to say, it didn't work out very well. Nobody was very comfortable and we didn't do it again for a long, long time. And then we finally started doing it again and we recognized it and look what's happening. Now today, we are meeting with them on a regular basis and we're doing things together. Our kids are now graduating with, with, some with associates, which I'm just fascinated with. And my kids didn't even have that opportunity when they went to school. So we've changed it so much and so, but all these organizations have been so very, very important to me. And, uh, but last, but not, certainly not least, I can't tell you how impressed I am with this department. They are amazing. I mean, they are just so dedicated, they are so good. I've made so many friends as, as I have all the others. But I just, I just, I just love these people. They're just, and I promise you, I call so many of them and ask them stupid questions. And I keep telling them, I'm sorry to ask you a stupid question. They say, it's not stupid, Janet, that's okay. So, but they're always willing to talk with me and give me whatever information I need to help me understand something or help me with something. But they are so dedicated and I just can't thank them enough. So, anyway, but each of them has had such an impact on, on, uh, me as a board member and I am so appreciative. Okay, now, now we get started into the hard stuff, maybe. But, uh, I've been a part of so many decisions. But probably, uh, uh, on the board, you will make lots, I've made lots and lots of decisions. But probably one of my best, I think, one of the best decisions we made as a board since I've been here has been our new vision. And the most important part of that vision is we are looking at each student. Some of you who are here will remember how much we argued over all students or each student. We came to each student because each student is different and we need to take them where they are and move them. If they're in, if they're reading on first grade level and they're in third, we need to pull them up. If they're reading at fifth grade level, we need to push them forward. And, and that's exactly what we need to do. We need to provide what every single child needs and I certainly hope you maintain that. As many of you know, uh, I have always represented, uh, many, many low socioeconomic areas in the state as well as the most diverse area in the state. Now, I want you to understand, and I'm sure you do, our students didn't choose to be born into poverty. Education is the only escape for many of these students. An escape from poverty, an escape from crime, an escape from incarceration or death at an early age. Please, please, I ask of you, do not allow their zip code to determine the type of education they receive. I have worked with some amazing superintendents and commissioners. I have worked with some amazing superintendents and commissioners and a few not-so-amazing. And as a state board member, I have had the opportunity to vote, to work with, to with five commissioners, four of who I was able to vote for. Now, a lot of you don't know this. I voted for one. Three of them I did not vote for. Now, hindsight's 2020, as you well know, and I now know that I was wrong on two of them, that they were, I should not have voted no on them. But I would like to take this opportunity to publicly, bear with me. To publicly apologize to Dr. Randy Watson for not, for not supporting him as commissioner. I was wrong. He has been an amazing commissioner who has been a wonderful leader for the state and, and helped us develop this vision, which I'm so supportive of. And the only negative thing I can say about him, and I say this loudly and strongly, is that he works too much. He would, he works 24/7, in my opinion. I don't know if the man sleeps. He is available nights and weekends. I'm not sure, I, I, I just don't understand how he does it. The only negatives that I can say, and I have put these on every evaluation I have ever given him because you get the evaluation, evaluate the commissioner every year, is he needs to take some time for himself and his family, you know? Because you can't put in 27 all the, 24/7 all the time. But I don't know that he ever listens to us, but I'd sure appreciate it if the new board or all you guys would probably push him this way because he is amazing. But he needs some rest, and he needs to be with his family, and he needs some free time. So, thank you, Randy. I would also like to thank all the board members that I've served with. I have served with some amazing board members, some of the greatest leaders that I've ever met. And frankly, so many of them have become my very dear friends. I have dear, they're friends from the first time I served. Valda Fever was here. Bill Wagner was here. We're still friends, and, and I love them to death. And some of you guys, I hope we will continue to be friends forever because so many of them, so many of my board members have become very dear to me. Thank you each for helping me and along the way, but most importantly, thank each of you for your dedication and commitment to education and kids. Well, it's been, it's been, it's been truly an honor and a privilege to serve this many years. I would like to ask one more time. I, well, I'd just like to say first of all, though, that I will no longer have a vote, but I will always have a voice, so be prepared. And again, I'd like to ask you, don't forget my kids. They're just as important as anyone else's are. Thank you.
Certainly want to thank all three of our members that will be leaving after today for their dedicated service. You have made a difference in the lives of the children of Kansas. At this point, I'm going to pass the gavel to Janet, so she will adjourn the meeting, after which time I've been asked for a group board picture, and we will meet in front of the table for that group board picture.
I've got tears in my eyes. I can't have a picture. The meeting is adjourned.